It is 7 o'clock on Monday, December 16th, 2019, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Our last board meeting for calendar year 2019. Thanks to everybody for being here. In attendance this evening are board members Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, John Ashmead for his final meeting as a member of the school board, Christine Malik, Tim Polis, and I am Crystal Brackey, Superintendent Steven Janowski, and student board members Diane Meseo and Naomi Ferguson also join us at the table. We will strive to remain focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement that we inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel as we conduct our meeting this evening. There are printed copies of the agenda on that table over there, and feel free to also have snacks and drinks as we have our meeting this evening. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. So, moving into the information and proposals, non-action items section of the agenda. This evening, we begin with time for public comment and have one request for public comment this evening. So, before that comment, I'll provide a brief overview of our guidelines. As outlined in Board Policy 216, we welcome comments from members of the public. We ask that you ensure your comments are consistent with our policy, especially around protecting the privacy rights of individual students and staff members. Members of the public have three minutes to speak, unless translation is required, in which case six minutes are provided. Mary, our board secretary, will indicate when your time is drawing to a close. Thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts with us this evening, and know that even though we will not be responding in the moment, that we take your comments seriously, and you may receive follow-up from us or a member of the staff. So, Jennifer Lewis, please step up to the microphone.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Jennifer Lewis, and I am a Richfield resident, and I have had two students graduate from the Richfield High School. I've spoken here before, and I really wanted to take a few minutes and just say thank you very much for your work towards sustainability and being very supportive of our sustainability concerns and ideas. So, I also wanted to say how much I appreciated your responsiveness to the school lunch issue. I know that was a really tough issue to deal with, and I felt from a community perspective how I was actually very proud of the way that the issue was handled by the school board. So, I wanted to appreciate, I wanted to tell you how much I appreciate that. I also wanted to let you know that the city of Richfield did approve a Sustainability Commission at their meeting last week, and the deadline for applications is the end of this month. They do want to have two student members on that commission. So, again, I appreciate the collaboration that you all did with the city, and I am very excited about the next steps. Hopefully, you will be able to have some students step up and fill those roles on the Sustainability Commission. I think that's just a great opportunity for further collaboration. And, one more thing. I know in working through the strategic planning process, cellphones could be very helpful in trying to get input. I know pretty much all students have cellphones, and if there are ways to get voices recorded on their cellphones and have maybe a Dropbox or something that can be used to collect that information and consider that information, parents would have the opportunity to record their input, students could interview their parents, that might be another opportunity. But I just wanted to offer those suggestions because I do also believe, as all of you, that to get all of the voices and as much input as possible would be very valuable for that process. That's all I have for you. I wanted to wish you all a very happy new year and safe and joyful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. Our next opportunity for public comment will be at our board meeting on Tuesday, January 21st, due to the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday on Monday, the 20th. So, mark your calendars. We move next into the superintendent update section of the agenda, so I'll turn things over to Superintendent Janowski.
So, just a couple of updates today. But I have Principal Nancy Statchell, an instructional coach and interventionist, Teri Mary Hugh, here from Sheridan Hills, to talk about their Book of the Month program. So, that's Principal Statchell.
Well, hello, everyb-
Sorry.
Hello, everybody, and thank you. We're very happy to be here. We don't have kids with us tonight because trying to figure out how to do this as a kid piece was a little difficult. Three years ago, we switched from having a one-school-one-book, where every student in the school read the same book, to a Book of the Month program. And the focus of our Book of the Month program was to really use literacy as an opportunity to deepen our equity work. And so, over the last two years and now going into this year, we have a different book that we select, and Teri's got samples of some of the books that she can hand out for you to kind of look through as I talk about it a little. And the books that we choose are really focused on the different cultural groups we serve, looking at whether that be the author of the book, the illustrator of the book, the topic of the book, the community that's represented within the books. Do you want to flip it? So, some of the books that you're going to see that we've done over the last two years and also using this year, it was kind of fun because when Sarah Jespersen was at Sheridan and she put up her display for our, the American Native American Month, it was great because I looked at the books that she put up, and several of the books were books that we were already using for our Book of the Month program. So, you can see those books, and then, Steve, I'll have you switch to the next one. These are all some of the books we've done, and it's everything from perfectly pointy, importantly perpendicular pinky was written by Alan Page about his broken pinky finger. And looking at, we started off with a book when we started all this about a student's name and how they got their name. And so, one of the big things about this is when we look at these books, we have activities that go with each book. Because Sheridan Hills kids are from all over the place, and we want to really make sure that we are tapping into and giving our students the opportunity to share and to learn from each other. So, a big part of our Book of the Month program involves different activities where students are going home and talking to their families and getting information from their families and coming back and sharing. There's two main focuses that we take with our Book of the Month program around the equity lens. One is looking through that idea of windows, mirrors, and doors, and the fact that when we look out, we need to observe and we need to learn about each other. We need to look beyond our own perceptions and our own experiences and acknowledge that different perspectives may make us uncomfortable and still looking at that. And then taking that information and looking inward and reflecting that upon our own biases that we bring to the table and what do we do. And of course, that final piece is you can do all that, but if you don't do anything with it, it doesn't matter. And so, that final piece is doors, moving beyond just observing, learning, and reflecting, and moving into action. And we hope that through our Book of the Month program that we are moving our kids to really learn more about each other and step out. The other lens that we look at our Book of the Month program through is Lisa Delpit's work on culturally influenced instruction. And so, really looking at that lens of, are we connected to our students' cultural and intellectual legacy? Are we connected to our students' lived experiences? Is it of value outside of the classroom? Is it connected to the students' community? And we hope through our Book of the Month program that we're able to tap into those different areas. And so, for example, and I'll have Teri talk about a little, what we do with every book, when I'd introduce it at a staff meeting, we would either go through the culturally influenced instruction or remind ourselves and have a conversation about what does that mean and what is it? Or we'd look at the windows, mirrors, and doors and reflect on that and take ourselves back through that. So, every time we introduce a book, we do it through that equity lens. And then, with each book, there's an activity that we do. And I'll let Teri talk a little about that.
Okay, so, it's about right now, this time of the year, that we start planning on what the next year's books will be. So, we start looking at different websites. The Jane Addams Peace Award is a huge one that I go to. We also go to We Love Diverse Books and different people that I know we've talked through in the district and gotten recommendations from different schools. Other schools are starting to follow our lead. I know RDLS has done it, and so has Centennial. And so, then, we pick an activity for the kids to do. We do a summary so the teachers know what the book is about. Then, there's, sometimes I put websites up where the author or the illustrator are there so that the kids can see what they look like. And then, there's an activity where they're led through and given some background to lead the kids through equity discussions. And I've been in the classroom a few times when that's happened, and it's really cool because the kids get really excited, and they say, "Hey, that's me. This is my house. This is how we eat. This is how we do things." And they really feel good about that, seeing themselves in the curriculum. And so, not only have I seen that in classrooms, I've also seen it with staff members. Staff members are getting excited and trying to learn about cultures and ethnicities other than their own. And so, that's neat because then our students are more invested and then we, you know, get to our model, which is to, you know, to excel, so. Here's some activities that are, some of the students have done. It's really hard to get activities from the teachers because the kids get so excited, they want to bring them home right away. But, there's one from We Are Thankful. It's a Cherokee book that talked about the different seasons, and the kids wrote different things that they did for the seasons that they like. And the other one was from our second Book of the Month, which was about Marisol McDonald doesn't, I can't remember the rest of the title.
Doesn't match.
Oh, yeah, that's it, "Doesn't Match." And so, they, she went, so, in there, the kids wrote puzzles of themselves and how they might, you know, thinks about their themselves that were important to them. And then, one of our kindergarten teachers had a book that they created last year based on all of the books that we used last year, and the kids wrote about how they are kind to one another and how they learn from one another. Oh, I'll pass her on.
So, that gives you some of the things that we do with the Book of the Month program. It's been a great program, and we also tailor the books for the different age levels. For example, when we use the book, "Let's Talk About Race" with our third, fourth, and fifth graders, we used, we all, they all saw a cat with our pre-K through grade two students because it's about perspective. And it's about thinking about what do people see when they look at you versus what do you perceive for yourself. The other big thing about our Book of the Month program is we connect with our parents. So, I always make a point of highlighting our Book of the Month in our monthly newsletter that goes out to parents. We have a bulletin board up in the building, too. And over the years, we've done different things. At some points, that bulletin board has included activities that the students have done. This year, we've got the titles up to give people the overview, but we switch it up every year. The key thing for me is that our Book of the Month program is really about our equity work, and it's not just about the title and just reading the book. It's what's the activity that's going into it? What are we looking for, and what are we looking to learn from it? And things like Thunder Boy Jr., for example, was a story about a child's name and how they were named. You know, we think about, when we hear our students often talk about, our students from our underrepresented populations, one of their first comments that they'll say is, "They can't even get my name right." And so, for us, starting out with a book that was about, "How did you get your name?", and having kids go home and get that story and bring that back and share that with each other, those kinds of things. Henry and the Kite Dragon was a great one about cultures that had a conflict, and how did they work that through. And so, we really look at the books as teaching tools. We also tap into the Teaching Tolerance website. And so, they have some different tools for teachers in terms of how to deal with big emotions. And so, when we read Sparkle Boy, we weren't quite sure what kind of reaction, especially in our fifth grade classes, we were going to get. And so, walking through some of those exercises with teachers so that they were prepared ahead of time for thinking through, "How am I going to respond?" Because my line always is silence is approval. And so, we can never sit silent because we didn't know what to say. You have to be ready to step into these conversations. And the other thing about the Book of the Month program is it forces our teachers to step into these conversations. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your work.
Your explanation was very clear. So, I can visualize it as a teacher. I'm very excited about these books, and thank you.
Thank you for letting us see the books, too, and the examples of student work.
Yes.
Really great.
Yes. The exciting part also is that some of our other schools, as they pointed out, have followed this lead and are really expanding some of their wide-ranging literature in their classrooms and their students.
The other thing I forgot to mention is we buy a book for every classroom, and we buy a book for the library. So, we are also then increasing and building our student, our classroom libraries with a great collection of very diverse books. And that includes our Center Base Program as well as our pre-K program.
Thank you. Have a great last week of school. Thanks.
All right, second agenda item. And you'll remember that superintendent update is just those topics that aren't voted on. I wrote, "Richfield Middle School Bid Award Update." And so, as you recall from our previous agenda, we went out for bid on Richfield Middle School. We had three bidders. We are anticipating our work coming in at right around our budgetary area. Typically, we would be at this meeting looking for approval. We are working through some complexities, and I ordinarily wouldn't have given you this update, but I think we have four weeks with the holiday prior to our next meeting. And so, I just wanted to let you know that it's not on our new business or old business agenda items just because we're not ready to take action in regard to Richfield Middle School bid. And so, we hope to anticipate having that for action on our January 6th meeting.
That's it for you?
That's it.
Okay. We are going to move into our next item, which is approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. As always, if there is an item that somebody would like to have removed for individual consideration, we can do that at this time. Otherwise, we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I will second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. So, we move into old business where we have two items before us. First up is a third read of proposed changes to existing board policy 582. Superintendent Janowski.
All right, so we are bringing back, this is an MSBA-required policy, 582 and-
State of Minnesota.
All right, yes, sorry. State of Minnesota. Yes, MSBA publishes recommended guidelines and policies for us, and they outline which ones are required and which ones are not. And so, this one is one of the required policies. We have had a couple of reads of this, and the goal is, when there are students who have a documented history of significant behavior experiences, how and what do we do in terms of communication? Some of the changes that we have made, you will notice a new statement in terms of purpose. "A third paragraph, acknowledgement that supports the students and families are a significant part of this policy. Richfield Public Schools Administration will ensure that social, emotional, and family-based supports are provided to students and families where there is a history of violent behavior by the student." Using that term violent behavior by the student, makes me feel a little uncomfortable. However, that is the specific statutory-required language, and so, we want to utilize that in some of our communication. We are giving social workers and school administration, so you'll see a G in there that is added, "Social workers or school administration will offer direct supports to families." Again, making sure that this isn't just a notification-based policy, but that it also, along with our other policies, talks about the philosophy of our overall school district. We're about the whole student, about the whole family, and making sure that we are doing the things to support our families in challenging situations. And then, within parental notice, the other change that has been made since our most previous meeting, again, supports offered to families through the school, social worker, or administrative designee are some of the things that will occur in part of that conversation back and forth with families. And then, attached is the form that would be utilized should this be required. And again, this is a statutorily-required form. With that, I will open it up for questions.
I have a question. So, three B, no. That is, you scratch, and then it's like B or C?
Three B would be classroom teacher? Oh, there is, correct. Littering, lettering is slightly funky with the correction. So, B would be classroom teacher, C would be history of violent behavior.
So, three C?
Yes.
It says something, it says that the consideration will be for an incident in the current or previous school year. So, does that mean that anything parallel to that is going to be, like, expunged or not considered, or what?
The notification is required by statute to that year's teacher, and then, if they return, the component of appropriate staff for the year after. It wouldn't be completely gone from their history or student file if it was in their student file, but if an incident occurred that met these qualifications, let's say in fourth grade, it would no longer have a reporting requirement by sixth grade.
Got it.
And so, it doesn't follow them in that same way.
I have a question, the addition in section one, that the district will ensure that supports are provided. Can we really ensure that they're provided, or we can ensure that they're offered?
Right. We could certainly change the word on line three to "offered" rather than "provided."
Because later on parental notice in six D, you know, the addition there seems to be, "Parents will be given notice of supports offered to families through," you know, so sort of, we're missing an introductory clause to D, I think. But there, we give notice of what the services available are. But we can't require someone to take them, can we?
No, we can, we can absolutely offer.
So, going back to that first one, we can't ensure that they're provided, but we can ensure that they're offered.
Correct. So, based on the feedback, and I'm just going to repeat it aloud for Mary, we would change the word "provided" to "offered", paragraph three, in purpose. And then, yes, in five, or six D, supports offered, supports will be offered. So, "will be" would be added, just spelling, or grammatically after "offer," between supports and "offer."
Sure. Thanks.
Other questions or requests?
I don't see any. So, a question for you is whether you would prefer to have those edits made and have this come back to us again the first meeting in January before taking action? Or if board members would feel comfortable voting on this as amended with that specific language that Tim just suggested and you read aloud? I'm not sure if there are strong feelings about that.
I trust our administration to take care of that. I have a vote on it tonight.
I wouldn't have a problem. Because this is what, the third?
The third reading, yeah.
With those amendments made, I would move that we approve the policy.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Ms. Malik to approve board policy 582 as amended this evening. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the revised and amended policy is approved. So, next up is our proposed legislative platform for 2020.
All right, so we've continued to work on refining our legislative platform and the wording. It's on page 63 of the board agenda. We have reviewed the AMSD and the MSBA position papers. We have reviewed our legislative priorities. We have tried to narrow things down to create a wieldly set, rather than unwieldy set. We have landed on four at this time, taking final input. We could move on this today. We also could move on this on the 6th of January, reminding us that we have a study session scheduled with our legislators for the 21st of January, the second meeting in January. So, just as a reminder, our priorities are around expanding programs and incentives to attract, develop, and retain teachers, particularly teachers of color and teachers in shortage areas, allow school districts to replace the high school MCA exams with nationally-recognized college exams, maintain or increase compensatory education funding and repeal the requirement that a percentage of compensatory revenue be spent on extended-time programming, and increase environmental sustainability efforts and create recommendations for schools without creating any unfunded mandates. I've been trying to tighten up that language to work with all of our board members. So, you willing to take motions or feedback to continue working with it further?
I have no edits to offer.
Thank you for the changes. Looks good. Student board members, is there any? I know you've helped us with some of these and have shared some enthusiasm, so I wanted to give you a chance if you wanted to add anything.
Looks good to me.
I love it.
Sounds great.
Great.
Lot of it is aligned with what the MSBA chose for their platform as well, so I think that it's good to be on the same page.
Makes sense.
Yep.
With that said, I would move approval of the legislative platform.
I will say it.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the platform is approved. We move into new business where we have three items before us. First is a proposed revision to our existing meal-charge debiting procedure. Superintendent.
All right, so just as a reminder, a walk-through history. In 2017, we were required by the USDA to come up with either a board policy and guidelines or standard operating procedure to handle meal debt. In 2017, using the best information that we had, we created this plan to handle our meal debt. Obviously, in this past year, we found that things weren't going according to what we had hoped and according to our expectations. And the implementation of alternative meals obviously left something very significant to be desired. So, in reflecting on our standard procedure and in working with Board Chair Brackey, talking about what might be the best way to respond, there's really a two-step process. One is to create a change in our standard operating procedure in the meanwhile because as we often change board policies, we take a while to implement and get moving with those. And so, what we have before us is what I'm going to call a short-term change in an implementation that will alter the way alternative meals by removing them. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But the larger answer is to also create a board policy. And that board policy, as we were reviewing everything, we talked about what is our overall philosophy of nutrition? Why are we serving meals? And what is the thought behind that? Because as we think about writing a policy around nutrition and unpaid meal charges, and you'll see this in the MSBA policy, it doesn't quite capture the philosophy of what we're trying to accomplish, which is making sure that all kids are getting solid nutrition and all kids are having all of the things provided to them to support their ability to learn. And so, what I am proposing is that we make today some changes to the standard procedures for how we are dealing with meals and meal debt. And then, we begin work, obviously, after you see what the MSBA policy looks like, on creating our own policy, and then a more rigorous guidelines that would supplant the meal-charge procedures and talk about what those overall procedures are in general. So, what you have before you is a couple of changes to our standard operating procedures around meal charges and meal debt. And a couple of things are due to the logistics that we've learned. And these are not perfect by any means, but what it does is it provides some safeguards against some of the things that might have occurred that we would not want to have occur. The first thing is, is that students would receive statements and communication beginning when a negative balance occurs. Um, previously, um, communication had occurred when there was a five dollars or fewer in a student's account. Uh, what we learned that means is, is that every student qualifying for free and reduced lunch who did not have money in their account were receiving communications. Steps, um, at one point had been taken to handle that, but the way to guarantee that the communication isn't telling people where their account balance is, um, if that's not a concern that they need to have, is to make that a negative account balance. Um, and also, as you know, all account balances have been zeroed out or were as of Thanksgiving. Um, and so that would help with that. Um, and then you'll notice that there is a removal of alternative meal choice, um, basically for elementary and for secondary students. Um, and right now, communication goes home in letter form and in automated phone call form. Um, and instead of an alternative meal, it has been changed for a temporary time being of increased communication. And what that means is, is that, um, we can set the auto, um, auto phone call and emails, um, to come more frequently as students go, um, if they arrive at those larger numbers. Now, parents are able to opt in and opt out of communication, and so there is some parental control of that. Um, but what it does is it takes the student out of the conversation and it, it means that they wouldn't have that particularly at elementary. Uh, the additional things that we, um, learned is, is that with the change in the, um, construction in secondary, the net cash machine actually no longer exists. Um, and so students are able to check their balances or deposit money at the point-of-sale registers, and so they're able to ask or get that information there in addition to their online account. Um, and so we made that change, and we also pointed out that people can link to fee pay for transaction details and get some more of that information. Um, and then also very much clearly clarifying that, um, if there are, um, in any way, shape or form, any consequences to students, and this is the second to last paragraph, um, any decisions will require specific review and written approval of superintendent prior to implementation. Um, and so, um, if we were to move forward with this procedure, then anything that might alter off, we'll see the very standardized procedure would require by specific individual written approval, um, which I would be very hesitant to give. Um, and so again, there are some processes we're going to have to continue to work out, um, because this doesn't actually handle all of the complexities we're going to need to come to within our guidelines. Um, and I'll talk about that in the next step. But I wanted to give that to you for review and see if there's any questions or concerns moving ahead with this.
I, I have some, just some edit type questions on, on the elementary item two, I'm sorry, item three. We, we talked about this when we first had this. When we say negative balance of over negative twenty-five, we, we run into some, some logic challenges, I think, with that. I would say a balance of, a balance below negative twenty-five.
Okay.
Uh, because it's negative because it's below negative twenty-five.
Okay.
You got like a minus minus.
Right, right. We're, we're running into straight.
Negative balance is below negative.
You know, item four, I would say when a student's account is below negative fifty. Change that from the student. The student's account is negative balance, and we don't, we, we tie it to the student, but that doesn't mean the student is the, is the individual who owes us.
And while you were thinking for one second, and so in secondary students, item four, changing owes to account is?
Yeah, right. Similarly there, um, the, right, the, the, the middle school, high school students' account is below negative fifteen instead of that neg- negative, and, um, that, that, that same sort of logic that appeared in the, in the elementary. Uh, students' accounts below negative fifty, right? So, that's, those are the, the nitpicky edit things that, that I have. And then, as we build on the, try to improve it long-term, I, I imagine where, if it, would, would, would the rewrite involve things like the Safe and Support of Schools Committee? Would it involve food nutrition staff, um, service staff? Would it, you know, I mean, would, would, would it require that we review all the things that students can, can use their account to purchase and all the food items that are there and how, you know, it, it doesn't address things like, so since this is procedure, it doesn't seem to address what happens when, if students inquire about their balance and say, can, can I get a double entree?
Right. So what we learned, um, and I have sent this out, this procedure out to nutrition staff around the district, what we learned is there is a lot of complexity. Um, and the ability to remove nutrition staff from point-of-sale conversation is actually technically not possible.
It's not possible.
Um, some of the challenges are double entrees, um, require money in the account. Um, or, um, if it is a student who qualifies for free and reduced, we should assume that we would not be reimbursed for that, or we may not be reimbursed. Uh, we also, in our innovative work that we're doing in our lunchrooms, we offer à la carte or additional options. We also in the process of opening a smoothie and coffee bar at the high school. Um, again, things that require money in the account. Um, and so as we think about, for example, taking the conversation out of point-of-sale, um, if a student has no money in their account and they come to order a coffee, um, or a smoothie, um, we're going to need to figure out how do we address that? Um, because, um, that, again, provides an additional challenge from a communication, but then also a finance and implementation perspective. And so those are the kinds of things, um, that we're going to need to work our way through with the Safe and Support of Schools group, with our students and with, with our nutrition staff, um, but not things, not things that were already in, in the, um, in the standard procedures. So as we think about an overall policy, which I, again, envision what we are trying to accomplish through nutrition, um, and then guidelines would include this worked out much more in detail with a wider range of, of components, much like some of our other four guidelines.
But just, just like, as you pointed out, point-of-sale staff, i- it's, it's impossible to avoid their, their participation in some of this. Students, thoughtful students who want to avoid a negative balance could inquire about their balance, can I get this? Are they being told a truthful answer? Can I get a double? Can I get something at the à la carte? If they're in negative balance and they don't wish to increase a negative balance, right? Are we, are we setting them up for a, a, a negative outcome?
Connotation.
Right, so those are the complexities, right.
If we're not being truthful, you know, and, and giving an honest answer, that is not shaming, that is just, if the student asks, we could assume the student's asking because they want the information.
Right.
And it might help determine how they act after that, and for us to just say, no, go ahead and get it, isn't, isn't a success.
Correct, correct.
So, I, I, I mean, just, just the way the, the first one, when we, we felt that we were very clear in how we wanted it implemented, and unfortunately, it did not come that way, the, the level of detail in whatever replaces this is going to be substantial.
Agreed.
Right?
Agreed, yes. Um, that would be one of our large learnings is, is that it is, it is a very big challenge. And the nuance of how to tell a student, um, whether or not they can have a double entree is obviously.
Or get a coffee.
Or get a coffee. Those are significant challenges. And how do we do that? And where do you put the register? And, and how does that conversation go? What we do know is, is that our level of clarity and our level of training did not satisfy what any of us would have wanted to have accomplished. And that means that we have to go through extremely large efforts to ensure that we are going down to every level of our organization to make sure that we put every safeguard in place to not find ourselves in that position.
On the, on the, the increased outreach to the, to the guardians or parents, the, the emails and the phone calls, are we, what's our source for those? Are we sure that they work? If, if they've opted out, how do we, how do we know? How, you know, so we, we could be just shouting into the void.
You are correct. And so what I would tell you is, in the short term, as I am changing the standard operating procedure, the main concern of today is to end alternative meals and the option of that occurring. Um, the things that could directly put our kids in harm's way from what we would like to have occur. I would say it is in our interest over the next couple of months to figure out all of those nuances, um, to try to put all of the details in place behind a guideline that we can all support and that, that covers as many of the eventualities as we can come up with, which requires getting those voices from Safe and Secure School or Support of Schools and our nutrition staff and, and a wide range of team members.
Do you see as part of those guidelines, what happens if parents choose to ignore the communication?
Um, so I mean, I think that is a conversation that you all are going to have to give me some feedback. Um, when you look at, and that's jumping ahead, when you look at the MSBA model policy, some of the things include collections agencies, um, and some of those things, things that we have talked about. Um, and, and those are some challenging conversations.
Yeah.
You know, I, I guess what I would say in my own personal reflection and learning, and something that I did not really recognize, I would say, two years ago, is, is that what I know my line of where I'm unwilling to go, um, because we did learn back in two thousand seventeen that there were people who might not pay if alternative meals weren't available, is I am not willing to put anything forward in front of the school board that would put kids in harm's way. I will not live with giving a kid something that could humiliate them. So, I don't know where my line is with parents. What I do know is, is we will not do something that I can't, to the best of my integrity guarantee, will not put us in that spot again. So I will have to do a lot of reflection on, on what we do with parents, and you will also have to, as board members, help guide some of that conversation.
Two years ago, I think we declined the option of, of, of collection agency. We just felt that was, that was more than, at the time, we were, we were comfortable with, um, if, that's if I remember it right.
Yes.
And, and, you know, it, it's also the case when we list here some of the things that, that, um, some of the things that, that could, could occur if the student's account owed more than fifty dollars. I mean, I think we should, we should be as direct and, and, and list, and be honest about the things that, that could happen, even as awful as they might be, that they should be in that paragraph, that they're on the table, that, that we don't take action that someone says they weren't warned about. Because if we were to take an action that's not in that paragraph, um, it would, it would be bad, right? Well, if I knew you were going to do that. And I don't know what those things are, right? I mean, uh, obviously, there, there are things we, we can't do, and there are things that, that are within our, um, you know, our control or, or, we have the option to, to enact. Thing, I mean, we have other issues with, um, the unmet obligations in other areas of, of the building, and so what, are the, would the penalties be fundamentally different for that? I don't know.
I expect these will be some challenging conversations.
Yes.
Um, where we probably are going to have some different opinions about what we as individual board members, what the administration, what our staff are comfortable with. And I, I think that that is where having the overarching policy that sets at a philosophical level, how do we want people to feel? How do we want people to experience nutrition in our schools can provide the overarching guidance? Um, that then, we're going to have to get to a very granular level of detail around what does that actually mean, um, given the way that our lunchrooms work? Um, and so I think this is a necessary immediate step as we then take the work over the coming months to do, I think, this deeper and I anticipate fairly difficult process of navigating what are we comfortable with as a district? And I think part of those conversations are going to be, do we start budgeting for this? Um, if we're not comfortable with some of these consequences that currently exist to school districts? So, that's, that's how I'm thinking about it in the long term.
I think I, I would agree with you that if, if, depending on the level of comfort or discomfort we have with certain things, I mean, if we, if we choo-, if we choose to just run balances up without taking some action, we, we have to be thoughtful and prepare a budget item that to, to fill what would probably be an inevitable shortfall.
Yep.
I know there's been some confusion out there when the topic of alternate meal choice is, uh, offered, so I want to make sure that, and I, I, I would prefer that you, Steve, put it in your words, because I'm going to be, I'm going to get old. But you, something that I appreciate that we did two years ago is that we actually made it, I don't think it should have ever been called an alternate meal choice, because it was not an alternative that was different than what other child could be eating, because we made sure that it was actually, it should have been that a removal of a choice, so you just had a set thing, but it was part of a menu that was available to everybody else, because before we changed that, there was an alternate choice that didn't include all the, uh, nutrition, uh, you know, the veggies and the fruits and all of that. So I, I, we, we've gone through a lot of learning and it's been painful, but I, I like to think that every time we make a change, we, we, we go towards something more positive, um, for our students. So, and I think ultimately, something that I agree is things share that the cha-, the children should never be responsible for the parents', uh, situations or choices or whatever. So, just.
I would say the language would be accurate to have, had we looked back and again, it would change the situation from this year, but restricted choice would be a more appropriate terminology than alternative. Um, and that restricted choice has been, we have multiple lines at the high school and there is restricted choice, or was under the guise of restricted choice.
So, the immediate action, um, for this evening would be to approve this revised procedure, correct? That's what you're asking?
Yes, and again, knowing that it is a temporary change as we work for the larger transformation to come.
Any further questions or comments on the proposed, yes?
I was wondering, are the machines going to be brought back?
Um, and so those machines no longer function, um, with, um, our technology system. So we're trying to work out, um, what I believe they have is Chromebooks or iPads that will be, they're setting up stations, um, that people will be able to check balances, um, and we're looking at that in the near future.
Um, do you know when the, I don't know what to call it, what this movie is?
So, so from an actual being ready to serve, they actually could have opened today. Um, the challenge we are having is some of the details, um, of what do we do with that? So in terms of trying to figure out those components of how do you deal with students without an account balance and trying to make sure that we don't find ourselves in the smoothie bar debacle of two thousand nineteen, um, we're making sure we get all of those solutions worked out first. Um, I would assume, um, when we return in January, I am hopeful, um, that we should be ready to open. Um, but we are, we are at the place where they are physically ready to open and everything is in place. Um, we just need, again, we just need to work out a couple of those details.
Something to look forward to in twenty twenty when you come back.
Absolutely. Yes, and they are asking our nutrition staff every day.
I bet.
Pretty excited.
As, I did ask it, I, I just, the, has the nutrition staff been seeing the, these proposed changes?
They have, they have.
The, the, the folks who work in the kitchen?
Yes.
And, and the individual buildings?
Uh, yes, it's gone to every building. Um, we've received, again, this is where we receive some of the information beyond. Um, the complexity is of à la carte, coffee bar, second entrees, um, point-of-sale, how to handle, um, recommendations that if you have the cash register in the front and people key in their code first, it avoids many of the problems that occur. Um, we've gotten a, a load of different feedback. It will require a lot more transformation, again, much like we will with Safe and Support Schools.
We could entertain a motion to approve the revisions to the procedure, if anyone is comfortable making that.
Does that include the, were the comments I made okay?
Yes.
The ones of the edits of?
I fully support changing it from making it sound as though the student is the one responsible.
Clean up the language.
And clean up the language, right, to avoid, avoid the double negatives.
Yes. And this will be then communicated out, again, in the next two days.
So as amended this evening.
I'll, I'll move the procedure as presented.
I'm second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Ms. Cold. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the revised procedure as amended this evening is approved.
All right, so, and this is just for review to, um, this is just that review of the MSBA model policy around unpaid meal charges, just so we have that before us. I have not written out, um, or we have not composed a policy document yet, and it will not look like this. But this is just to remind us that this was required by the USDA by July first, two thousand seventeen. Um, and it's really around how we are going to handle situations where students, um, eligible to or paid meals do not have money in their account. Um, it is required so that, uh, students in the state of Minnesota who qualify for free and reduced lunch are not subsidizing the meals of students who, um, pay for lunch. Um, and you can read things like, "School districts must follow appropriate debt collection practices when attempting to uncover or recover unpaid meal charges." Um, this is quite an uncomfortable policy if you read it from start to finish. It's got a list of awkward recommendations and awkward things about how to deal with this. Um, the reality that's happened, um, since November, um, is, you know, it's not really a surprise, but the number of districts that are in large amounts of, of debt, um, based on unpaid meal charges, is an issue around the state and frankly, around the country. There are hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars, um, being taken from general funds, um, which often serve to fund teachers, for example, um, to cover holes in unpaid meal debt. Um, what is required for us is to have some clear policy and practice around what we are doing. And so, obviously, at the moment, we have a practice which we just revised, um, we will be coming forth to work, work our way through guidelines. This is again, only here for review, uh, but it's also just to illustrate, um, some of the uncomfortable practices that are generally recommended, um, not just by MSBA, but this is again, these are national questions and, and very significant issues. Um, so, in the coming board meeting on, in January, you'll see a first draft, um, talking about what our overall philosophy is, and it will begin, um, starting to work our way through guidelines, something I assume will take at least three reads and perhaps more, um, because we'll also be getting feedback, uh, from multiple voices to make sure that we get this as clean as possible.
All right, seeing no other conversations, I feel like we touched on a, a lot of the long-term things in our previous conversation. Um, we move to donations made to the district since our last meeting.
All right, and so, um, recommending that the board accept the following donations with gratitude, the Ellen Carlson Memorial Fund, five hundred dollars. Sunshine Fund received donations from the following people, Paula Anderson, two hundred dollars, Bruce and Marie Smith, five hundred dollars, Sharon Nygard, twenty dollars, Clay Thiedler, fifty dollars, with a match from ECMC Group for fifty dollars, Tiffany Tesmer, one thousand dollars, paid forward program through her employer, Bell Bank, Passion Church, one thousand dollars per month for each of the next twelve months, Holly and Philip Blades, twenty-five thousand, or twenty-five dollars, Richard and Catherine, Catherine Schmoker, five hundred dollars. Uh, the Sunshine Fund received donations of four hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-three cents through Give to the Max tape from the following people, along with some anonymous donations. Marnie Sable, twenty-five dollars, Dylan Dooley, twenty-five dollars, Aaron Luffholm, twenty-five dollars, Jane Rembowitz, twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents, Walid Ula, fifteen dollars, Clayton Wilson, ten dollars, and anonymous, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
I'll move that we accept these donations with gratitude, being moved by the generosity of so many people. And, maybe with that.
I'll swing on that.
So motion by Mr. Tensing, and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted with gratitude. So we move into advanced planning. And first up, as always, is legislative update. Not sure if we have anything in addition to the platform that we approved just a few moments ago.
And just that obvious reminder, once again, January 21st is our legislative study session with our legislators, 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock here.
Do you want to say anything about the delegates or something?
Sure.
Okay.
He was great. We have the longest, this is my fourth year, this is the longest packet with resolutions. We had 20 resolutions. Generally, we have about 20. And they, we, like I said before, a lot of what was approved is, you know, similar to what we did. And then there were, of course, things that are more applicable to rural districts. But as always, it's really great to hear the debate, and to hear what other school boards are doing, things that are similar to ours, and some that are very, very different. So it's a nice way of getting a point of perspective from all over the state.
Thank you for representing us.
I mean, as she shared with us, Ms. Paula shared with us, there's also a resolution passed for local control. And so I will be putting into the next board meeting packet in the legislative update session. They are hoping that all boards will review and possibly pass a resolution about local control, basically talking about empowering local school boards based on other legislative leaders and having similar rights for local control. So I will be sending this on to you for review, shared with me by board member Cole, and we will be ready to talk about that on January 6th. I'm going to talk about if that's something we would like to move forward.
And I sent it to Crystal and Tim. I didn't want to send it to everybody to not break any rules about open meeting laws, but that is something that they hope that we discuss and approve, so that we get a lot of support from school boards all over the state, in hopes that that will make a difference as it goes through the legislative process.
Next, we have time for any information and/or questions members of the board would like to share with each other.
I just want to, so our next meeting is the first Monday in January, where we have our annually scheduled organizational meeting.
Yes.
Have we had any discussions openly about what people would like to be when they grow up?
We did not touch on that.
We've not touched on that, okay.
No. But yes, what, do you want to introduce what happens at that meeting, so people can think about it?
Right, so, for those who don't remember, that's where we assign ourselves the board roles that we have, such as chair, vice chair, treasurer, and clerk. With John's not coming back, we have an opening at least in clerk, and it's also possible that other people are interested in staying or moving on from the roles they're in. And then we also touch on, we start editing the liaison assignments, the, what do we have, probably 25 entities that we liaise with, and the assignment is broken down among us. And certainly, at least John's would be subject to reassignment, but any of the rest of us who are on a list now, and possibly willing to move, or anxious to move, or whatever. And we also will have a new board member who, in a private conversation, I advised that she should be bold about, and not be shy about the things she seems interested in. Because, you know, just because I happen to be in a spot, doesn't mean I'm entitled to stay in it, so.
Yes, and I know that our new board member has a list of all of those liaison assignments, so that she and all of us can be thinking about that in the coming weeks. And as you said, we typically look at that once or twice before finalizing it in the new year. But at the organizational meeting, we do need to take the action of confirming officers. So everybody should be thinking about if there is a particular role that they are interested in, or perhaps not interested in, because that is important too.
I'd be happy to stay where I am. But if someone pushed me over, I would probably allow it, but I'm quite happy to stay where I am.
I would feel the same way.
I managed for eight years to avoid chair, so.
We need to know your secrets once you've left.
On that note, I feel like, of course, we need to formally appreciate you for your eight years of service to Richfield Public Schools. As a board member, as a part-time driver, in addition to being a board member extraordinaire, we appreciate all you have done for this community and the schools, and know that you will continue to be a champion. But we will miss you and wish you all of the best as you reclaim your Monday evenings and whenever that project committee group meets, because I know you're there all the time, too.
Wednesday mornings.
Wednesday mornings.
And the weekends of reading the packet.
Correct, it's not just Monday evenings. It's Friday, it's three days, Friday.
Sometimes, yeah, Friday, Thursday, yeah.
I was telling Pete before the meeting that you see what's going on in St. Paul with your construction and schools, and Burnsville's closing three schools, and it's been a relatively smooth eight years, and I just thank you all for your support.
Deficits in big districts, too.
I hope you don't take all those secrets with you.
Right. Yeah, I mean, John just wanted to recognize definitely the contributions that you've made to, I think, really modeling for everybody on the board, how to sort of both follow your conscience, but also keep yourself focused in on what the mission is of the district. And I think, really appreciate how you've done that, and contributed to a collegial and mission-focused board.
I appreciate that. Yeah, it's been a good eight years, but it's time to move on.
Yeah, we should give you a round of applause. And as part of the transition, I also wanted to appreciate our team. Last Thursday, we had a really great day-long orientation with our soon-to-be sworn-in newest board member, Allegra Schmiesek, I said it wrong, Schmieschuck, who is in the audience, for those of you who are watching, wondering who I'm gesturing to. But we visited all of our schools and programs in the morning, and then had an afternoon with district staff talking about what's happening.
How come we didn't get invited?
Maybe you can get your own tour.
Speaking of open meeting laws.
If you might keep on this orientation, we can...
Well, the visits to school are nice.
It was nice. It was a rapid tour through Richfield. We had about 15 to 20 minutes in each one of our sites, but it was a great way just to get things started, which was similar to what Paula and I did four years ago as new board members. So just wanted to appreciate Allegra for taking the day, and to our staff for all that they did to welcome her and to share lots of information, as she is getting ready to join us up here at the table in January.
Allegra, you got me in trouble. I had a teacher, she said, she's not even sworn in yet, and she's already been in my classroom. You've been there eight years, I've never seen you. What's going on?
And that's when he knew he made the right decision.
That was funny. Any other announcements or questions?
One quick update reminder. So MSBA, the Minnesota School Boards Association Leadership Conference, is on the 16th and 17th of January. I know some of our board members attend. Just as a reminder, if you are planning to attend, make sure to get that information to Mary Island. Early registration ends on January 6th, which means that it is one charge for the district if you were to plan to go now or prior to Monday when we return. And it's another charge if you were to do that after that Monday. So if you are interested, please let Mary know, and we will take care of registration. I will be presenting as a member of PLSB, and I think I am also, and that is the Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board. I think I'm part of another presentation, but I am not 100% sure at this time, so.
Please, I don't get nailed down relatively early.
Yes, yes.
Just one super quick follow-up item. I just did want to make a request. We had heard from Ms. Lewis that there's an opportunity for a couple of our students, and of course, this is an opportunity that we have specifically requested from the city. So just wanted to just see if we could get follow-up, as we are hopefully able to...
Already happening, would you like to...
So, yes, we'll call it two steps. So one, I have already communicated with the admin at the high school, shared basic information, asking about the request from the Sustainability Committee.
Commission.
Yes, commission, yes, sorry. And then I will be looking for more information about that, and then also sharing that out. But they already have preliminary information sent to them during the working. Thank you.
Good example of quick action, especially given that we have four school days left before our students leave for winter break. So the time is...
I hadn't been paying attention.
Who's going, right?
Who's going?
So Diana and Naomi also think about friends, classmates. I don't know if you would want to take something else on, given that you already have this commitment, but people who you think might be interested in being on the first Sustainability Commission for the city. December 31st, application deadline.
Obviously, Mr. Brown at the high school is a key contact person and the club that he's the advisor for. I've had an opportunity to meet with Natalie Hansen, who's the president of that club, and I think there might be some interested tips there.
And exciting to hear that the city has taken this step. Okay, our next meeting will be at 7 o'clock on Monday, January 6th. As Tim noted, it begins with our annual organizational meeting, that will follow, be followed by a presentation from Richfield Middle School, and our Where We Are in Enrollment Presentation. So lots of exciting things to come, but our first meeting in January. And as I shared earlier, the second meeting of January will be on a Tuesday, Tuesday, January 21st, with time for public comment. Are there any items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda that we have not already talked about? Okay, seeing none. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, thanks to everyone for being here this evening. And again, John, happy farewell. Thanks for your service.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you make the final motion?
You should.
I, well, we got, what you have to announce, requested?
I, yeah, we're ready.
I move, will you adjourn?
Crickets.
Christine's looking out for you. So we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Ashmead, and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:03 PM.